Good evening. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Spinks, Cochee.
Here.
Mezak. Janudas.
Here.
Fluharty.
Here.
Saunders.
Here.
Rhodes.
Here.
Council, can I have a motion to excuse Councilwoman Mezak and Spinks? By Rhodes, second by Saunders. Call the roll.
Cochee.
Yes.
Janudas.
Yes.
Fluharty.
Yes.
Saunders.
Yes.
Rhodes.
Yes.
Council, you have the minutes of the work session, March 4th, 2019. Any corrections to that? Seeing none, can I have a motion for acceptance by Janudas, second by Fluharty? Call the roll, please.
Cochee.
Yes.
Janudas.
Yes.
Fluharty.
Yes.
Saunders.
Yes.
Rhodes.
Yes.
And you have the minutes of the regular meeting, March 4th, 2019. Any corrections to that? Seeing none, motion for acceptance by Rhodes, second by Saunders. Call the roll, please.
Cochee.
Yes.
Janudas.
Yes.
Fluharty.
Yes.
Saunders.
Yes.
Rhodes.
Yes.
No presentations, full business. Ordinance number 9676-19.
An ordinance adopting the City of Bedford credit card use policy to continue to ensure compliance with state mandated policy and declaring an emergency.
Can I have a motion for third and final reading by Janudas, second by Fluharty? Frank, you want that one?
Sure. This policy, House Bill 312 came out and it required cities that were non-charter or recharred city to have established that credit card policy because of the way it was being used in many other places. Being that that's a good policy, we had one already, I thought it would be a good time to update our policies and the credit card and mimic what House Bill 312 required. As well as also including an update which we did in the last couple of weeks, which is the inclusion of now Amazon Prime, which we use for our accounts and then including that and how we utilize that and with credit card usage. Also, the control that we put around credit cards and the control that we put around our purchasing will be entailed in this ordinance and I ask council to approve that. May I move forward on that?
Thank you. Questions? Call the roll, please.
Cochee.
Yes.
Janudas.
Yes.
Fluharty.
Yes.
Saunders.
Yes.
Rhodes.
Yes.
Ordinance number 9677-19.
Amending section 151.08A and C of the Administrative Code entitled Compensation for Overtime Work of the City of Bedford and declaring an emergency.
Can I have a motion for third reading by Rhodes, second by Saunders?
Okay, and similar to last time we updated our contract policies in 1990, we needed some clarification in a couple areas in regards to people being promoted, how we pay them and so forth. So this clarifies that ordinance and makes us continue on in a more defined met.
Thanks, council. Yes, done.
Yes. Now, this policy pertains to everybody but Fluharty?
No. Why would that be that way?
Because Fluharty isn't covered under overtime.
No, but there's a lot of others too. We have many people who are not in the union. This policy would then cover those people who are not in the union contract. So in line with the union contract and how this is earned, that includes secretaries, building person, now people in the police department, those that are not and they're more civilian in that regards than the people in the union contracts. So this covers all those people who are not in the union. And also identifies also in the program who the administrative employees are.
Who's administrative?
So that's all to clarify all that information, also besides what I talked about earlier. So it needed to be updated since 1990.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Cochee.
Yes.
Janudas.
Yes.
Fluharty.
Yes.
Saunders.
Yes.
Rhodes.
Yes.
Ordinance number 9679-19.
Authorizing the city manager to contract with LPV Productions, Inc. for videotaping services for council meetings and state of the city addresses and declaring an emergency.
And it's our wish to put it on second reading because we don't have enough people to pass it on in the city tonight. Call the roll, please. For excuse me, a motion for second reading by Janudas, second by Fluharty. How do you call?
Cochee.
Yes.
Janudas.
Yes.
Fluharty.
Yes.
Saunders.
Yes.
Rhodes.
Yes.
Resolution number 2532-19.
In ordinance, our resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with the Oak Group, Inc. for master plans, examination services and declaring an emergency.
And again, not enough to pass on emergency, so we're going to have a motion for second reading by Saunders, second by Rhodes. Call the roll, please.
Cochee.
Yes.
Janudas.
Yes.
Fluharty.
Yes.
Saunders.
Yes.
Rhodes.
Yes.
Reports, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple items, real quickly, just to make everyone aware of. We do our annual sounding of our water system where we bring in an outside contractor and they come in, they sound the system, they help us identify any water leaks thus where we'll go back and make the repairs. This is very important over the last, you know, eight, nine years, maybe longer that we've been doing it. It's helped us identify some larger leaks and ultimately button up our system and reduce our loss, which is obviously very important. The company's going to come in, they're going to start beginning of April. We'll do this twice a year, once in the spring, once in the fall. Spring will be beginning of April. They will be going around town in a Toyota Tundra. They'll have some lights on top. Or depending on weather, in some of the side streets, they'll be in a kind of like the caged door ATVs that you see, protected with the roll cage on it. So if you're wondering who that is or what they're doing, they're sounding the system and they're contracting and working with us. We got notified by the county last week regarding a project that was ultimately scheduled for 18 and got bumped to 19, and that is the resurfacing of Center Road. That is going to be taking place this year. That is a county project. We had urged them to look at some other county roads in Bedford, specifically Solon Road, Union, that are in much worse condition. However, when this was submitted for funding and the county looked at it, they're going all the way from Five Points downtown Bedford, all of Bedford, through Maple Heights, and I believe all the way to the highway. So when you deal with that amount of roadway, multiple municipalities, that is going to score much higher for funding opportunities. So even though Center Road in Bedford isn't in that bad of shape, they are going to be redoing that. The pre-construction meeting, we don't have a lot of the details. We did that next week, it is scheduled, pre-con meeting is scheduled for next Wednesday. We will have representatives there, obviously from our safety forces, service department engineer, and we'll be there to, you know, ask any questions and get the detail scheduling, you know, how we're going to deal with traffic and things of that nature. So, once we get that, we'll share that with council and obviously at the next council meeting. But that is taking place this year. We were also notified that both rail lines, Cleveland Commercial, Leaning and Norfolk Southern are going to be doing upgrade improvements to the West Grace Crossing in 2019. We don't have a timeline for that, but those upgrades are going to include about a half a million dollars in investment. Most likely it'll be the actual crossing, the track, and there's going to be some light upgrades as well. When we get more details on that, we'll share that at an upcoming meeting. Also, wanted to let everyone know that we did, we put it out in social media. There was an article in the paper, on our website. We worked with our auxiliary unit of the police department and we were out last week issuing warning notices for trash and trash cans, either out early or left out afterwards. Over the next couple of weeks, we're going to be issuing those warnings. And then starting in April, when those warnings are issued, it kind of, it's created an database. Once, if we're out and then you're repeat violators, it ultimately will end up in a citation. That is not our desire to do that. What we would like to do is start seeing these cans come in after trash day and not be out throughout the weekend. We actually encountered a handful of residents who they just never brought them in. They were, you know, we didn't know, we just took the bag down. Some didn't know, and that's fine. That is why what we're trying to do is just get it out there that, you know, it's just a warning notice at first, the first instance, but we did go out. I think 50 plus, somewhere around that, are the warnings that we gave. But that is going on and the police, the police department is working to coordinate that through the auxiliary unit. So, that started last week. And last thing I have is the, a little early, but April 13th at 10 o'clock at the high school, at the stadium, will be the annual Easter egg hunt for the children put on by the Recreation Department. So April 13th. End of report.
Thank you. Mr. Law Director.
Just want to commend the Bedford Historical Society with their event that they put on last Saturday. They had a good time, it was a fun event. And also want to commend the Browns for picking up. Thank you. Have a good team this year. Other than that, hope that'll be good.
Thank you. Mr. Finance Director.
Yeah, a couple items. Besides reminding you all to file your tax returns if you haven't done so with the tax power by April 15th, please do. Just let yous know, the Bedford Schools Foundation is going to have the fun run. We're going to have the art show at the high school and the Bedford Rotary's going to have their pancake and French toast breakfast, all on April 28th. It's a Sunday, it'll be from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. The tickets are $8 for adults 13 and over, 6 through 12 are $3, and under, five and under are free. So if you'd like, we'll have tickets available for that. Please mark that on your calendar, Sunday, April 28th, week after Easter Sunday. That's all I have.
That's it?
That's good.
Mrs. Mezak is not here tonight, but she wanted me to pass on to everybody that, and pass on to Mike, that she's pleased with the auxiliary and what they're doing with the trash cans. She's happy to see that happen. And she's also want to remind people that as we're inching closer to spring, doesn't quite seem like it yet, but we're getting there. When you start doing your yard cleanups, don't throw stuff in the street, especially breaking leaves or sticks and that into the street because that all goes into the sewers and gets down to our wastewater and it causes problems and problems cost us, the taxpayers, money to try to fix that. So keep the stuff out of the street, she wanted to remind everybody. And of course, she said you could always call her if you need her. She's there by her phone, so passing that on on her behalf. Mr. Janudas.
End of report.
Thank you. Mr. Fluharty.
Well, I guess I got to say something to you. Too quick here. First thing, a couple things, signs of spring. The sweeper's been out. That's when you know, the more snowpaws hopefully and the sweeper is off doing the curbs. And I'm going to Florida in a couple of days, so that's another sign of spring. And John threw away, took away a little bit of my thunder with what we picked up in the Browns, but I'm going to read it anyhow. We were all sad to see that LBJ went to the LAL, but now we got OBG, he is coming to CLE. So, go Browns.
End of report. Thank you. If it snows, I'm blaming you. Mr. Saunders.
I figured there'd be almost less, but there's nobody here.
You're second last.
Yeah, I know. Just a couple notes that I don't know if you've seen on the news that the Ohio House has now passed the resolution or ordinance or whatever it is that they do to eliminate your front license plate on your vehicle. That passed today. Now it goes to the Ohio Senate and we'll see what they do with it. So, was it 28 states don't require a front plate now? So, it's something that may be changing things. Unfortunately, it's the rear plate that these speed cameras catch, so you're out of luck. The other thing is, is our neighboring city just took a hit today too because Schwebel's Bakery is closing in Solon, which is a guaranteed loss of a good 200 jobs over there. Now, some of those people do live here in Bedford, so they are going to be looking for another job, although Schwebel said they'll move them to, where's their other bakery? One in Cincinnati and whatever, but it's like Lord's time. We'll move you if you want to move. But it's going to be a hit for the entire region because that's 200 people without jobs now. So, now I have a question, a couple of questions for Mike. Bedford Heights is getting Columbus Road done this year. Is that going to include our concrete section all the way to Bartlett? Or are they cutting it off at Columbus Road School where the corp line goes down the middle of the road? Do you know?
I'm not aware, but I don't believe it's coming down into our town. I will confirm that, but I don't, I believe it stops at the line.
Well, the line goes down the middle of the road all the way to Bartlett, so.
I think it stops at.
They're not going to do.
No, I don't believe so.
Half and half, I would think. It would have been nice if they took it to the asphalt section at Bartlett, but who says the county ever does anything that way? On the Center Road, when they grind that asphalt off the Center Road, they're going to be in for a big surprise because when that road was repaired the last time, the base was powder. So they're going to have extensive base repair to do if they grind it all the way down to the concrete base. So hopefully, our engineer is aware of that and that we can maybe get some decent repairs under there. And it's brick from Ennis to Broadway, which by the way, is not a county route. The county route actually ends in Ennis, so don't tell the county that. And what, in regards to the railroad, if they're going to do that kind of an upgrade and we get them to put the larger gates up so that we can start working on our quiet zones in that area, because that's only fiberglass poles that they have to replace in that regard.
Yeah, I don't know if that will, that won't dictate the quiet zone piece. I mean, it would help, obviously, but I mean, we could always ask. As far as the quiet zones, if they had, if those gates stayed the same, we could still move forward with it. If you recall years ago, when that topic came up, we sent notification, we sent in both of our applications, they came out, they measured. They told us how far we have to go back from the center line in both directions, which was a major concern. If you take it back, these 60 to 100 feet from both sides, you're now creating a lot of right turn onlys. Right turn only out of Walbridge, right turn only off of Magnolia, right turn only Palmetto Extension. Those are safety concerns for us. Obviously, if those gates are down and our safety personnel have to reroute and go down Powers and over, and if they can't cross because there's gates up because they extend out to the 100 yard marker, that's a concern. So when we discussed it last time, the topic was kind of tabled. If we want to pursue that, it's something that we can pursue, but I think there needs to be some significant public meetings. There needs to be meetings with business owners. A lot of those entrances are going to turn into right turn only and that is going to be something that is going to be a big, big change to get used to. Do the gates, would it be nice to have newer gates and that? Sure, but I don't think that is what's dictating the quiet zones. It's the decision, do we want to go forward with that and to continue that application and start creating a lot of those changes for the businesses and the residents in that specific area? One, and two, how do we get around the safety concern of the Palmetto Extension if those gates or if those median barriers extend all the way past that and create a right turn only? We need to be able to get to that side of town. And if there's cars waiting for the tracks, and if those cars can't go anywhere because you have median barriers, that's a concern. So that's kind of where we're at. Now, I'm more than happy to have those conversations if council wishes to do so, but it's really not relevant or it's not effective based on the gates that are there now. It is based on the change of traffic flow and if we really want to push that forward.
Well, actually, right turn onlys are far safer. Anytime you can take the left turn movement out of an area, it's actually an increase in safety. In fact, ODOT under state routes, whenever they do an improvement, are actually taking their aprons and forcing people right in and right out only. So it's something that, it might require a slight widening or something on West Gray Street in some of those areas or in that area just so that you can turn them in or redoing that whole section in there. But that's here nor there. But the quiet zones need to be looked at again because those trains are really blasting, especially with the new decibels and when you get that turbo engine that comes through, it is something else. So, and the last thing, you mentioned all the roads with Forbes. With Oakwood doing Broadway this year, there's no way Oakwood can do their portion of Forbes as that project died for this year or is it still on the books?
No, it was in the, I put it in your memo this week. Oakwood is not moving forward with contributing for that project.
Because they're doing Broadway, so they don't have.
It is my recommendation that the city not cover Oakwood's cost. I don't know if that's what you're suggesting. I would recommend we don't do that. The cost is only about roughly $60,000. If we, if they cannot commit to that, I doubt that the county will allow them to pay that at a later date because this is a reimbursable program, which means the project gets done and you submit for reimbursement. It's not like that they're putting the money up front. So is it in jeopardy? Absolutely, it's in jeopardy. Our recommendation is, can they do Bedford's portion? I don't know if they're going to do that because it's not a clear cut right down the center of the street. Forbes Road and the city lines, they weave in and out and then there's a couple weird parts that pop out. I don't, I don't think they would do that. You know, I would like or would love to see Oakwood look at some other options. It's not like it's a $400,000 project. I think their portion is roughly $60 some thousand. It'd be a good project. There's heavy truck traffic there, there's heavy truck traffic that go down there that goes over to Walton Hills. You know, we're committed to our end, but I would definitely strongly recommend against covering Oakwood's expense when we have other streets in town that need to get done.
I would agree with that, but with the expense that Oakwood's going to have with the county doing Broadway, their entire stretch, which is their main street, I highly doubt if they're going to partake in this project this year. So it may die on that fact, but so be it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. One other note here. Yes. So sorry.
It's okay.
I go by the voting sheet over here.
Yeah, that's okay.
Then first and then our ladies here, but I'm sorry, other.
That's all right. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for coming tonight. I just have one announcement. The Garden Club will be resuming their monthly meetings, starting this coming Thursday. If anyone would like to attend and see what the Garden Club is all about, we are taking new memberships all the time. You don't have to be an expert gardener. If you're just somebody that wants to learn more about gardening, we want to meet you. So I'd like to invite any of you that might be interested in the Garden Club to join us this Thursday at Ellenwood at 7:00 p.m. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I was just going to say, we decided on our summer meeting dates already, so it's just spring, but we're thinking ahead, so we will meet on the first Monday of June, July and August as we have the last few years. Put it in your calendar so you can all come. And with that, we're going to move on to new business. Ordinance, and with our new business, we don't have enough for voting to pass, to go to emergency passage on third reading. So we're going to do everything, the next three on first reading only to get enough people here to vote on them. Ordinance number 9680-19.
An ordinance to levy assessments for delinquent water bills in the City of Bedford and declaring an emergency.
Again, need a motion for first reading by Fluharty, second by Janudas. Call the roll, please.
Cochee.
Yes.
Janudas.
Yes.
Fluharty.
Yes.
Saunders.
Yes.
Rhodes.
Yes.
Ordinance number 9681-92.
Amending ordinance number 9617-18 entitled, chapter 906 entitled, Use of Public Ways for Small Cell Wireless Facilities and Wireless Support Structures of the City of Bedford Code and declaring an emergency.
Again, the first reading, motion by Saunders, second by Rhodes. Call the roll, please.
Cochee.
Yes.
Janudas.
Yes.
Fluharty.
Yes.
Saunders.
Yes.
Rhodes.
Yes.
Ordinance number 9682-19.
Amending ordinance number 9576-18, authorizing the city manager and the chief of police to enter into an agreement with the Village of Orange for use of the Bedford City Jail facilities and declaring an emergency.
Again, we need a motion for first reading. Janudas, second by Fluharty. Call the roll, please.
Cochee.
Yes.
Janudas.
Yes.
Fluharty.
Yes.
Saunders.
Yes.
Rhodes.
Yes.
And we have, repeat the motion.
Yes, can we get a motion to accept the Planning Commission's recommendation of March 5th, 2019 regarding JP Martini, Martini Construction Company located in Hamilton Avenue in Cleveland, Ohio? Owner Marvin Hewitt of 700 Turney Road Center, LLC, and 305 Equipment Corp., Lawrenceville, Georgia, approving a proposal to renovate the exterior of the Sunoco Service Station and can be into a convenience store and gas station and we and Turney there. Sunoco that closed down. So yes, what would mean that you agree with the Planning Commission's recommendation and no, what would be that you do not.
Can I have a motion for such? By Janudas, second by Fluharty. Call the roll, please.
Cochee.
So we have a question.
Yeah, I have one question on that one. Has our building department checked the apron configurations on that, the pole away from the intersection as recommended by the Ohio Manual Uniform Traffic Control Devices? They don't want any drive apron within 18 feet of the radius, which you turn the radius and add 18 feet. If that apron's in that area, they need to chop it off since it's being remodeled anyway?
If it is, I'm sure Kelvin's quite aware of all that. Double check.
I just bring it up, so.
Call the roll.
Cochee.
Yes.
Janudas.
Yes.
Fluharty.
Yes.
Saunders.
Yes.
Rhodes.
Yes.
Next motion?
And we have one more motion, to accept the Planning Commission's recommendation of March 5th regarding Yolanda Lewis of Chestnut Drive in Walton Hills. Owner Michael Shore is proposing to open a beauty salon located at 794 Broadway Avenue. So again, yes, what would mean that you agree with the Planning Commission's recommendation, approving the beauty salon.
To have a motion for such, by Saunders, second by Rhodes. Call the roll, please.
Cochee.
Yes.
Janudas.
Yes.
Fluharty.
Yes.
Saunders.
Yes.
Rhodes.
Yes.
And now comes that portion of the meeting for the citizens, hearing of citizens. To wish to speak, please come forward, state your name, your address and your comment.
Good evening. Ellen Briggs, 149 Grand Wilburn. Mr. City Manager, if you could pass along my thanks to the water departments. We received a notice on our door stating that they noticed a spike in our water usage and to check to see if any leaks or anything. And so I checked, my husband checked, we found no leaks whatsoever. So we called back and it was explained to us that. that if there's a problem with your water meter, that it'll shut off, it'll just go dead. It won't spike to an unusual number. So we went back, we looked around, and we did find a leak. So we were able to go to get, call someone out to get that fixed. And of course, the person who fixed it said, well, I've never seen anything like that before. That's why it was so hard to mine. So I just want to say thank you, you passed that along. So it was a courtesy that they provided, and it was a very welcome one. So thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Megan Simantowski. I'm at one oh eight Jordan Drive. I had had contact with both Mr. Montello and Mr. Mao concerning the issues there. Issues are not getting any better. Just as today, I had to call police to come to the house. And I thought it was very rude of the police officer to get in the middle of the street, holler out, and say, oh, tell my landlord so she can appeal to him. This is the kind of service we have been going since we've been here with the police department. I have called Mr. Montello a couple of times concerning the issue of prosecuting our landlord, the Montellos. He told me nothing can be did. He'll get back with me next day, two times. He felt on purpose. Last time I called him was because of my granddaughter. Them coming in and taking pictures. She's three years old. She had no business in there for videos or pictures. And he told me, oh, well, you got a good lawsuit against him, but the city's not gonna help you. I didn't ask the city to help me to do anything concerning money for these people. I'm asking the city to help us, not be too scared to live what we are because we live in fear. We don't know what these people are gonna do here. We got to the court system. The judge, he's right along with them. We've been known as liars. We were banned of showing evidence in a house how the property is really is and how every time your inspectors come out, they fail the property. And yet and still, out of all this time, we've been in there since December. They have not been cited, have not went to court, but they're asking for the money that we place in escrow, which the judge is planning on giving to them this Friday. And none of the violations have been completed. And all I'm doing is trying to see, where do we go from here? Me sitting up, writing to Columbus, to all these other organizations trying to get involved here in Bedford for Bedford to do that job is wrong. Because I feel as though the Montellos should be handled here in Bedford, Montells, I'm sorry, Montellos should be handled here in Bedford since the property is here in Bedford. We were not supposed to be living in this house. And yet and still, we were allowed to come in and move in. Landlord told us that it has inspection. I notified Bedford in December, telling them of things that was going on in the house. At that point, we learned that it had five safety violations. Three days later, the furnace went out. She brought in a guy from Middleburg, Macedonia, somewhere in Ohio, but it was way out. And he was a handyman who reconstruct furnaces. This is not the original furnace that's in there. They took off the parts from the furnace and put in. Called the building commission department and explained to them, well, no one came in here with a permit to put it in. They said the people were, they were hunted. Yet and still, we've been here. Inspectors came out. Three dozen people, two dozen people has already owned up to the fact putting a furnace in, and the furnace didn't even work. We had to have East Ohio Gas come out, which we explained, for five weeks of gas. There was no carbon detectors in the household. They just put them up the last time the inspector came out. We had water coming from the floor in the bathroom, from the toilet and the tub, which they had to put us around. They had their jackleg workers come in who are only handymans. No one in the city of Bedford put forth an effort when I asked them to have people come in here. Yes, it is.
That's not true.
Yes, it is.
The department has inspected the place.
Yeah, they have inspected it. And I have also called, sir, please. I believe, is my time to talk right now?
Well, you don't make false statements.
I'm not making false statements. I'm not making false statements.
A lawsuit right now with their landlords. You gotta be careful what you say, I would advise you.
Excuse me?
You guys are in the middle of a civil lawsuit upstairs, and you should be careful what you say.
In the middle of a civil lawsuit? Yet and still, we can't even get protection here from your police officers.
Well, I don't know.
We're being bagged by your police officers. And it was like, you knowing about this, so I guess it's all right with you. You're a law director.
I mean, you called me two days ago.
I called you.
Yeah.
I called you when this first started happening, when they made threats against my grandkids and called Children's Services over. I asked you to take.
I don't know if you were.
Yes, I did. I called you and asked that you could prosecute, bring up charges against these people. You told me, oh, let me get back with you. Never called back.
I did speak to your daughter.
This was like in February or December. No, you talked to my daughter, but you never talked to me in person. I called you same week I called you. Am I right or am I wrong?
I spoke to you.
Right, right, right.
I spoke to you Friday afternoon.
Right.
And I'm sure, I believe Mr. Montello, as he stated, he spoke to your daughter because the police department actually met with your daughter here. And based on the report, I believe, your daughter was okay with the fact that she was given the phone when the contractor was indicating that there were, in the photos, and they were all deleted. So I can't, I'm just going off, we spoke. It wasn't in February. I spoke with you Friday afternoon. And I, and Mr. Montello and I spoke. So we did get back to you. That's unfair to say that.
No, no.
And I believe, just for the record, I was adamant that if you ever felt if you were unsafe or if you ever had a concern, to absolutely contact our police department. And I also had stated that when you indicated that they just show up, that I would strongly advise you to indicate to your landlord, just like they would expect you to abide by the lease. In your lease, it says they need to give a twenty-four hour notice. I would advise you to request the same from them. Obviously, there is a civil lawsuit between you and them in the court, so there isn't a whole lot that we can say. But other than, if there's ever a concern, regardless of what's going on, call our police department.
And which I did today. I did that today. And I told you, repercussions. I called the police department because the guy was supposed to be a handyman. He told me he was gonna come into my home anyway because he had keys to come in, and he has that right. And so I called the police. One officer was wanting me to come up and talk to me. I expressed everything to him, what was going on. The other one stood in the middle of the street for all the neighbors to hear him say, oh, well, just tell the landlord so she can start eviction process. I mean, what is that? We come hit you, the police department, and getting back to that Friday that I talked to you, or that Friday that I talked to you, or the Friday after, whatever. We go to the police department.
We spoke last Friday.
And we, her, and we both came here after court. And we asked the police officer what can be done about the picture-taking. You know, they expressed, oh, this is a one consent state. So no one has to have consent to take pictures. But that's false. Anyone, anyone under the age of twelve cannot be photographed in the state of Ohio without the parent who said.
I'm here, one oh eight Normal, I'm the daughter. All I wanna know is, how would you feel if your daughter, three years old, being taped? Children's Services have already been called. I literally have a heart problem. I have to take medicine. And I sit up here and I look for justice from the police officers. No one has given us any justice. So when I take my daughter, I can't even take my daughter over there, just like today, that's what she's trying to say. My one-year-old was hurt. I told the landlord that today was not a good day to come over. She ignored it. This repairman ignored it. And to hear that this repairman was coming, has a key, getting ready to come into a home where my one-year-old was sleeping in the back. Yes, he has the record, conduct, and everything else. Because now I'm starting to look at everything, anybody who comes in the home. And the police officer says, oh, get him evicted. That's not right. Where's the justice? But I don't care. Fine, do whatever you want with the case. But where's the justice for these kids? My seven-three and one-year-old. What is gonna be done?
Well, you're in civil court before the judge. You're doing what you're supposed to be doing.
No, the judge isn't looking at this. So I'm coming to you all as being at the head of Bedford, asking, where's the justice for these kids?
Well, you're depositing your rent with the court. When you have a dispute with your landlord, that's what you're supposed to do. And he's supposed to be given an opportunity to make the repairs. If you guys can't seem to agree on when he can come over and when he can't come over, I, you know, that seems to be the issue. I mean, I don't know. I have never spoken to the landlord, I don't even know who the landlord is. But that's the issue, I mean.
The issue isn't they're just coming over.
I got you.
They're sending a term message.
Coming up Friday, you have to repair stuff.
Yeah. And the issue is, is that when we call our officers out there, why are we the ones getting made to look like we're coming up in the middle of the street?
Well, that, I'm not gonna say that happened. I don't think it did. But in any event, we'll look into it. And I mean, I don't know, you're in front of the judge. There's not much more I can do at this point. It's a civil matter between you.
He doesn't wanna hear what I have to say.
Well, did you guys think of hiring an attorney to help you?
Yeah. I'll be honest. I recently lost my job because I was in the hospital with my, with a black clot. I still am recovering from it. So. How?
But we want to be.
No, I'm saying, where's the justice? That he's taping my kids? Or they're coming in now, we have a repairman coming in. And he, the repairman stayed there after the police, the one guy who spoke to my mother, told him to leave. After. And nothing was said to them.
You know, I, you know, I find it very contemptible because even in your civil court, even in your police department, when a person can come in and throw racial slurs in your household around three little kids, this has been told to Bedford. And you are, you're not doing anything. We asked for help, you're not doing it.
Our police department, our officers, I'm gonna disagree with that.
Everything, okay, well.
I'm gonna take our police department's side on this one. Our police officers did not relay racial slurs.
No, we didn't say.
You just did. Yes, you did. You said.
No, I said the workers.
Okay, but originally, you said the police department. And I'm gonna stand up for our police department.
No one said, your police officer said racial slur. I said the workers there in the household. And everybody in Bedford knew about this. And we asked for protection from the police about that. No one did anything. No one. I would do like somebody coming in your house doing antics, a black face, without makeup. Huh? You wouldn't like it.
It's the first time hearing anything.
In front of your kids. Oh, this is not your first time.
Yes, it is.
My name is James, Gerald. Living in Waterloo, knowing how to. All these things he's saying, I'm surprised. Your policeman did say that. I saw about the victim. You know, so the victim. You know, where do it stop? Where do it stop? She's sick, I'm sick. Where do it stop?
Why don't we let them finish the work?
We did. And no one, they signed the papers saying they're finished.
Has everything repaired now?
No, that's not repaired. They're coming in messing with the lights, electric, electrical, which they weren't supposed to mess with.
This is basically what's going on. They fix the issues and then, because they're not certified to do the work, stuff isn't completed. And I've told this to the judge upstairs. But at this point, I don't care about all that. I'm looking at the fact, and that's what we're all saying. What can be said about the police department not doing what they're supposed to do and protecting us and our rights?
And does that take our civil rights away?
That's not true.
I, you know, I heard you all saying, this is a constant horror from you, especially you, Mr. Montello, about the fact that we're not letting anyone come into our homes to do work.
Just said it now for the first time.
People are here every other day, coming into our household, staying from sometime nine o'clock in the morning, eight at night. Weekends, we haven't had a day of rest since we moved in here, since we got behind Bedford. You get these people together on these houses. And then, other people, wait, other people have been living here long before we have. So why haven't these people been cited? Why haven't you all took them to court, cited these, all these bad conditions in this house? Nothing's been done to them, and still, nothing's been done to them. We've been, just like I said, we've been there as a liar. You can see this by Mr. Montello. That's the way he's talking.
I'm not saying.
We're liars.
Saying that.
No.
I believe, I believe they were cited once, which is one of the reasons why you did end up in court. As I indicated on Friday, and I can't, even though we do share, even though we do share the same building, the court is actually a completely separate entity. So we don't have a whole lot of jurisdiction or authorization as far as decisions made by magistrates, judges, and things of that nature. So when an incident gets over to court, it's in court. Most of the time, because either the tenant or a resident or the city has recommended that it get to court. If there's a dispute of that nature. One of the recommendations that I would make, being that you're in court, is definitely the concerns with who comes over or the hours or when the repairs are being made. I would request that with the judge or the magistrate that's hearing it and express those concerns. And maybe they could give, they can order a timeline on that. But again, I can't, you're in court already, so I don't have that. And none of us have that jurisdiction. I'm just trying to offer a suggestion that can maybe help your concern with the owner of the property and or the people he's hiring to come in and make some of those repairs.
What about the police department? Who falls, do they fall under your jurisdiction?
Yes.
Can you please look into that incident today? Because.
I'll look into that incident today.
Because this is.
Absolutely, I already wrote down.
Like I said, it's, I don't care about the house. And they're, they're, I've told them, we're looking for another place. And as far as I'm concerned, my kids, I have to have somebody follow me, follow me so that, and look out for me to make sure that I get to my boyfriend's house okay. Because I can't stay in the home anymore. I can't stay there anymore. I can't stay there anymore because we have people with numerous keys to the house saying we can come over whenever we want. Whenever we want. Wait a minute, wait. Whenever we want. Man taken, just like I told the officer, I don't know what he put in that report, but like I told him, I said, he showed me his phone. He did not say that he deleted it.
Did he, did he let you delete him?
No. And I told him, I said, that's not deleted, but okay, whatever you wanna say. And I told him, I said, "That's not deleted, but okay, whatever you wanna say." I told him I was gonna take it a step further and make sure that I get some type of help. I'm going downtown tomorrow because I couldn't go down there today because my son having surgery, dental surgery today. But I will be making a, a protection order. But I just wanted to know, because I went through the city of Bedford first to try to get help for my kids. I tried to get help for my kids. I don't care about the house anymore. I care about them. Because I'm pretty sure you are all mothers of fathers' grandparents. And you wouldn't like the fact that somebody takes videos of the kids.
I'm not sure that.
Or Children's Protection Services.
Uh, could you be, but I'm not sure that.
Who mistaking the videos?
The landlord.
Landlord.
The landlord, yeah. And I requested, and when I came back up here to talk to the officer, he said, "The kid has the same right as adults. You can't do anything to them." And I've never heard that. I've never heard that. A three-year-old being able to be taped in her home? A three-year-old? And it, I'm sorry, that pisses me off. It hurts my heart. I can't protect my kids. They can't come see their grandparents. I thought it would be okay, but I guess not. Man walking up in there every day.
Shouldn't we look into the police report?
Thank you.
I haven't seen one police report about any of this, to be honest with you.
Cause that one right there, what he said, that I said was okay? I never said it was okay. Especially from people who called Children's Services and lied on me. And the only reason why I was able to clear my name and clear my children was because I had the proof where this woman said, "God bless your children," because I would let her in at night to get into the house. I don't know what type of people they are. And I'm seeing it right now that they're, they're, they're manipulative. They try to hurt, hurt kids. I don't trust them. Just like tonight, I have my brother that's gonna follow me to my boyfriend's to make sure that I get there safe and no one is telling us. That's a lot. The, can't do anything here. Police department will not do anything. That hurts. Hurts.
There has to be specific threats made. I mean, uh, I haven't heard you say anything that they're threatening harm to you. I mean, you.
I don't know what they're capable of with this video. What, wouldn't you be scared if your grandson was a bit?
Well, I mean, if someone's taking your kid, I mean, that's not necessarily.
I yelled at this man to stop. I yelled at him to stop.
Would you let somebody take your, your kids? Would you all, would you let somebody take your kids?
I'd change the locks.
Videotape.
I would change the locks and this way you can't get in.
They told us, we have to keep the locks like this. We have to, we can't change them because it's in the contract. And I said, "Well, the contract needs to be amended." I sat up here and I talked to the judge. The judge tells me, "Oh, you're a liar."
It's a joke to him, to him. I have, I have been there.
I sat up there and I sat up there and I told everyone what the, from. I made you talk to, I, I haven't talked to you, ma'am. I talked to you, Ms. Laurie, and I talked to you, Ms. John. I have, I spoke to you. Yeah, briefly.
Two minutes. Yeah, that's why I was confused. Cause Friday, you guys had indicated that you did delete the photos, but your mom or Mabel, you, you, you had said they were the.
He didn't delete them.
You told me Friday that, that they were deleted, but you were concerned that there's another folder in phones that say deleted items, and you didn't go back and shut that. That's what was set up.
No, I didn't.
So, and so that's the only, that's the only reason why I asked that.
I never said that. And we swear off something he said about talking to Mr. Patel. I talked to you before you talked to Mr. Patel. When your secretary asked me when I talked, I wanted to talk to him. I said, "No, if I was important enough for him to call me back Monday, then I don't wanna talk to him." You asked me several times when I talked to him, and I said, "No." Why? And I told you at, at that point, that I was writing him up with the discipline of the word.
I, I don't know who Mr. Patel, who's Mr. Patel?
Well, whatever his name is.
No, I'm sorry, I don't know who.
Okay, again. Who, who, whoever he is, okay? Your law director.
But I, but.
Now you have, Kiera, now you have a whole different attitude that you sitting up here in front of Congress with, you were damn near licking my boots when I was talking to you on the phone. You was, you was so nice on the phone. But now, all of a sudden, you wanna try to bite my head off and say, "I'm lying about some." When you're sitting up here lying.
I was only asking for clarification.
I gave clarification.
I wonder if they're gonna do the hand of Judge Melling upstairs? I mean, he's been a judge here for thirty years.
The clarification is that I don't know if the video was deleted. That's what I'm saying. And I don't know for my mother, but I'm speaking on behalf of me as the mother.
That's all I'm trying to clarify.
And I'm saying that I don't know if it was deleted, cause they claim they deleted it. I don't know.
And, but you did not. That's all I wanted clarification.
I did not.
Okay, that's all I wanted clarification.
Yeah, I'm sorry. There's, there's, I haven't. And that's what I'm saying, that's why I'm coming to you all as a mother. Can you please get some help? Cause Patel, that's their name. Acta, Acta. Patel. P-A-T-E-L. Acta Annelish Patel.
Okay.
Please, can I get some help? That's what I came here tonight for, is for my three kids who cannot speak for themselves.
And I will urge, just like I mentioned to your, to your mom on Friday, if at any point you guys ever feel concerned, do not hesitate. Call our police department. They are professionals. They're trained. They'll be there.
So what's the first thought when somebody did a repair and come into your home? And they, I had, I had, I tried to show the officer my, my text message, where I told the landlord, "No, you cannot come over, cause I have appointments." I told him that. So what's the, what's the first thought there?
I would bring those issues up with the lease during your civil matter on Friday. Absolutely. You have, you have rights, as I indicated to your mom, in that lease, just like the landlord's asking you to abide by certain obligations in that lease. He needs to abide by the same items. And that was my recommendation. I wouldn't let anybody in there. And at the end of the day, if it means changing the locks and things like that and 24-hour notice, I absolutely would do those things. I absolutely would contact an attorney. I would absolutely take those steps. I relayed all of this very nicely.
And I don't have my money, that's why I said, I don't have the money. I was recently laid off.
We cannot represent.
No, I'm not asking you to. I'm asking to go through the legal system. Because if it was me sitting up here hurting my child, you all would be taking me out by my hands and knees. And I'm saying, I don't know what these people can do to my children. So I'm asking all of it to just be looked into.
Right, absolutely.
We don't know, and hardly any of this story, honestly. I mean, I've had a brief phone call here or there.
I think I spoke, I think we had a conversation, I think it was about four o'clock, somewhere around that on Friday. It's the first.
Yeah, I was over the phone.
Quarter to five, yes, quarter to five, correct.
I'm, I'm talking over my kids.
On the day that the, uh, incident happened, where the paper was going on, she called Mr. The law director. And she left a message right here.
Everybody's speaking, he did.
It stays Monday. I've been in court all day, I have to tell you. I think, I'm not discussing a council meeting.
All right, well, we can look into so much what's up in the court. We have no control over it. We can look into these other incidents and, and, uh, see, see what it is.
Yes, we'll check it.
We certainly don't want anybody hurt. There are rules that both the landlord and the tenant have to abide by. There's the landlord-tenant laws and all that stuff. Uh, I don't know what they are exactly, but they're out there. I'm sure the, uh, housing court down in Cleveland could help some direction on that.
There's a civil case upstairs.
And a civil case, yeah.
Well, they could, uh, get, remember to, uh, our civil rights from the laws there because we can't tape in our home. We can't record. We can't take pictures.
We have no knowledge of what happened.
But, but, they can come in here to take pictures. And he accepted pictures last weekend, last weekend court. So what's that? That's reversed back, right?
Well, I thank you all. And you all know what my kids have been going through. Hope it, thank you.
Anyone else?
Let me bring up a subject here. It's a little bit of a light-hearted, I mean, that they was going through. Uh, my name is Jay Watson, I live in Forty borough. Uh, you mentioned something in today's meeting where there's a, um, piece of property at Lee and, um... You were talking about that, you heard something?
Oh, Lee and Turner, the old central gas station.
Is that different?
Yes.
Yeah, half of, half of Lee.